Yeah, it's gonna be my phone for now, Scott.
Okay.
My computer's.
Oh, that's okay, but you can hear us okay?
I can hear you, yeah. I'm just a blank screen, right?
Well, your name shows up, but we can't, uh, we can't see you, which is all right if that's your preference.
Yeah. If my computer cooperates and pops on soon, it's been updating since 30.
Mine always chooses to update at the worst possible time.
I'm guessing that you have some other people there this evening because you have a mask on.
Yes.
People who are...
We do, we have a, we have a, I have a little company on the dais this week, this month.
Scott, can you hear me or not?
Yes.
Okay.
For those of you who are there in person, there's the possibility we'll get some feedback through the speakers. You've got yourself on a Zoom call as well. So just, you know, please yourself with regard to possibly eating your, your microphone. If you start to get a bunch of feedback.
Scott Robinson, you look like something from the war. You look like, you look like that is from the Revolutionary War.
Yes, Scott Mitchell, how can you have that nice, nice mask like that? Where'd you get that?
It was a gift.
Wow. I like it.
Based on Terry's comment, it was the social distancing.
Hello, Randy.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who said hello? I missed, I, hello, hi there.
We're not, we're not adhering to assigned seating, given the... Given our situation.
Pretty much same as that view. That's why I took my glasses off. No offense.
It's about seven, so should I start recording?
Yes, please, Terry.
All right, we're both recording and live on YouTube.
Recording and on YouTube?
Correct.
Okay. John, are you good? All right, Mr. Paul, what's up to you?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining whatever mode that you've chosen for tonight. Before we get started, obviously, I'm sitting in for Ted Parker. And I just wanted to pass on to those of you who might not know, on July 8th, Wanda Cartel's mother and Ted's de facto mother-in-law, Esther Cummings, passed away. And I would just like for us to remember Esther and any of the others of our community who have passed away due to the virus or any other reasons for the past month as we entertain a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Shall we proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance in our various locations? Find them the closest flag and please stand in. My Pledge of Allegiance. Flag, flag, United States of America, general republic, which stands the nation under God, invisible liberty and justice for all. Okay, shall we proceed with the roll call?
Mayor Ravela. Mr. Bowers.
Mr. Bowers.
Here.
Ms. Drysbach.
Here.
Ms. Halaho. Mr. Parker. Mr. Paul.
Here.
Mr. Robinson. Ms. Sherlock. And Mr. Jaeger.
Here.
Is, is mine the only one that's closing?
Okay, Mr. Mitchell, do we have anything to announce?
Just, the only announcement I'd like to make, Mr. Vice President, is, and you're all already aware of this, but the borough received word last week that we will receive a $227,805 grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for traffic signal upgrades and improvements at the intersection of Pennsylvania Avenue and Trenton Avenue. So we're happy to receive word of that.
And I'd like to thank Kurt and Gilmore for getting that done for us. Thank you.
And the only other announcement I should make is there will be a brief executive session at the conclusion of this meeting. There will not be a need for council to reconvene afterwards. So we will just wait until adjournment. And the purpose of that is to discuss legal and personnel matters.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements or presentations anyone wants to make? Okay, then we'll open the floor for public comment. Scott, do you have a list of, of any, of anyone wishing to make public comments?
We do, and no one signed up.
Ah, okay. Should we throw the floor open and see if there's anybody out there now who would like to make a public comment?
Well, we do have one member of the public present. Do you care to make a public comment?
Jane Berger, 90 West Maple Avenue. It's good to be able to be back in the building. Thank you.
I believe we've exhausted public comment.
Very well, short and sweet. Then shall we move on to the approval of the minutes from March and May? Could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes for the agenda meeting of March 10th, 2020?
Second.
Any comments?
Who seconded that?
Eileen.
Eileen.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
It's already there and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded.
Ah, great, okay. Then we're ready to vote? All in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. Ask for abstentions as well, Mr. President. Oh, any abstentions? Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Good, thank you. Thank you. Then we'll move on to, can I get a motion for approval of the minutes of the council's regular meeting of March 16th, 2020?
So moved.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. And lastly, may I get a motion to approve the minutes for the council's regular meeting of May 18th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Next, we'll turn to the Treasurer's report. Mr. Treasurer, you're out there.
Any questions?
Yeah, are there any questions pertaining to Treasurer's report?
I'd like to make a comment if I could. Mr. Chair? Vice President?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so I just...
I can't tell who's talking.
It, it's Mike. Thanks. So in, in reviewing, I did see the one mill that was moved to Capital Reserve, which is what we do each year. The one mill is, was agreement to put towards Capital Reserve each year. I do see you moved that over. And just as, as another comment, overall, the general fund revenues look good year-to-date. It doesn't look like the pandemic or any of the other emergency situations we've been in have really hurt that too much. And as of June, at least, we'll see what July brings us. Expenses are pretty well in line with what we expected.
Yeah, we'll, we'll know more about the pandemic effects on, on revenue probably in August or September.
Good to know, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the Treasurer's report?
This is Mr. Bowers. I have a question for the Borough Manager. I saw on the Treasurer's report there was a payment to Treasurer. I was just wondering if you could give us an update on that.
Yeah, we're actually, if you'll recall, our goal was to be fully implemented by May 1st. And of course, COVID-19 disrupted that. Public Works is, I don't know, John, what do you say, 85% integrated into Tracer? And the Code Enforcement Department is at about 70%. So we're thinking that probably by October, or at least by the end of the year, we'll be good. I think that payment you noticed is actually our last. I think next month is a partial, just the way that it broke up. But yeah, we're, we're already fully utilizing it. We were hoping that this summer, we would actually do a demo here at a council meeting for all of you to see how we're utilizing it. But because of circumstances, that has not worked out. But we still intend to do that at some point. I think it'd be most valuable when we can have everybody in the room and you can see how each department is using it.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to 7B. Can I hear a motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills that were listed in the materials in your Borough box?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Point of order, I think that has to be a roll call.
Oh, sorry.
It's a monetary value, right?
Does that need to be a roll call, Mr. Solicitor?
I would make it a roll call. Okay.
Okay. Would you like me to call the roll?
Excuse me for interjecting, but do we actually have a motion, though?
It was moved by Mr. Bowers and seconded by Mr. Jaeger.
Sorry.
Mr. Vice President, if you like, I'll call the roll. Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mrs. Drysbach.
Yes.
Ms. Halaho.
Yes.
Mr. Parker is absent. Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock.
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Can everyone hear me, I hope?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
All right, great. Thank you for that. All right, I was able to take part in the annual Mayor's Conference this year. Lots of different speakers. They spoke on a number of topics, including emergencies, emergency services, police issues. Other timely subjects were included, such as fireworks. And just to touch lightly on that, because I know we had a couple of residents reach out to me as well, to council. They shared a couple of ideas what some of the other boroughs in Pennsylvania are doing. Not that I'm saying we should or shouldn't, I just, there are ways to regulate things. One interesting story they shared was in Harrisburg, they actually designated four of the parks, and I don't know how many parks Harrisburg has, but they had four parks designated as safe places to light the fireworks on the roof under the supervision of the local fire department. That way, they could monitor everyone, give courses if they had to. To maintain safety and to maintain the distance of the 150 feet, that is a big concern for everyone. So it was an interesting thing I wanted to share. They, they talked about, obviously, emergencies and man-made disasters and how they're handled and how they were handled before COVID-19. You know, certain things always come up, like the Red Cross shelters and how people want their pets. They want to take their pets to the shelter, and I certainly understand that. And it's more challenging now with the social distancing that everyone has to do. So just certain things like that, I felt was interesting, I wanted to share. I do want to thank our Chief, Chief McClay, for the good job of keeping everyone safe. We had basically, in my opinion, three different groups. We had protests and demonstrations. And I thought that was interesting, that three different groups got together in Morrisville. And it maintained a nice peaceful atmosphere. And I'm also wanting to thank the Chief for not making a knee-jerk reaction as it suggested to him that he should violate some people's rights that were openly carrying. And I'm glad that he didn't violate anyone's Second Amendment rights. I think the borough would be in a lot of hot water and cost a lot of money to, to represent the Chief had he done so. And I think this is, goes why the people of our borough like Chief McClay. And I know I shared a letter recently that we got thanking him for that type of service. Also, I know I mentioned it last month just briefly, I'd like to make sure, I mention it again, that I'm asking the elected officials to be mindful of how they speak to our employees. And I do have a couple of things. One is I have some questions, I'm just gonna throw them out there a little bit early because it's an action item tonight. I believe it's 9B. There's a motion that'll be called for through the administration to enter into an agreement with the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority. I'm sure if I'm, if I feel it's unclear, I'm sure the residents do. I don't know what, what the term agreement means. Is that a sale or is that they're just gonna oversee the property? The RDA is certainly the caretaker of the Cloverleaf property in our borough. They've been for a long time. And last time, we had a potential builder or a client to come in and, and talk about developing that, which was pretty exciting at, at the time. The, the RDA let us know that the borough was gonna be charged about $100,000 for all the maintenance fees and different things that they've done over the years. So I'm very curious about this property on Philly Hillcrest. My understanding that the borough has to, if they're selling it, have a real estate appraisal done. So I don't know if that was done, I don't recall seeing that. So that's, and also, the way it's written is that the RDA would get it. So just curious why Habitat for Humanity and other people really aren't giving an opportunity. And moving on, I'd like to mention, and I think this is sort of good news for our residents because I was contacted, and I'm sure a few of the council people were, about the proposed warehouse on Pennsylvania Avenue by Post Road. Technically, that's Falls Township, but the concern is, again, first ward is concerned with the truck traffic. Today, I was able to speak with Jeff Dentz. If you don't know Jeff, Jeff is the president of the Falls Township Supervisors. Jeff and I have a very good working relationship. He shared with me that they did have the proposal come in front of their board just a few nights ago. They were also given a, a proposal that included a traffic plan. Now, it's my understanding that that traffic plan has been given to PennDOT. And what I think that our residents would like to hear is why I even bring this up, is what I'm being told is the plan, as well as probably how the Falls Township Supervisors feel, is they are concerned with traffic going through Morrisville. And the plan shows the trucks entering and leaving that place would be coming off of Tyburn Road. They would not be going through town. So that's a good thing. So we'll keep an eye on it, we'll keep listening and taking updates from Falls. But I, I think that's something that we want to hear, the way that they're looking at this. So that's good news. And that'll be the extent of my report this evening.
I could add something about that.
Use, use your microphone.
Because I also had a conversation with Tate and Lyle regarding that. And I too looked at the plans on the warehouse. And one of the problems with that plan is, is that all the cars will be exiting or not, will they have the ability to exit on to East Post Road, which will then create a traffic problem or more cars going up Post Road or Jesse or the other small streets there. So that's something that I think that we need to talk to the Falls Supervisors about. But also with Tate and Lyle, they are willing to make a left into that development and no longer go up Post Road where the homes are if that's acceptable to that warehouse area. So if that is possible and that works, is there a way that we could get, when it happens, and if it happens, we could get signs that say no trucks going forward? Scott? Well, we have, we have to talk to Falls about that and change it. But if they're going to open that up, then at least the, the trucks won't be able to go up Post Road past all those homes. So, so, and Tate and Lyle was happy about that. They didn't realize that that could be a roadway for them to go.
So you're talking about a second entrance from Pennsylvania Avenue?
No, what those plans show is that there is going to be an exit for cars onto East Post Road from that development. So people would have to go up Post Road or down Riverside in order to exit. The trucks cannot, but cars will, which is problem number one. But problem number two is, which could be alleviated, Tate and Lyle would then be able to send their trucks through that development to get to their facility. And that would alleviate the trucks going down Post Road. So if we could talk about those two items with Falls, that would, that would be great.
Yep.
May I say something? Pennsylvania Avenue is a state road, so we're kind of running with it and regulating the truck traffic. On Post Road, we can keep trucks on Post Road. And that, we can, we can say no trucks on Post Road. And that's simple, that's not a state road.
Well, we, we can't, though, because that's the only way to get to Tate and Lyle.
Anthony Falls. Anthony Falls is Anthony Marsdell on Post Road. Not on Marsdell.
Well, half the borough is ours, another half is. I, I, I really agree.
They can write all they want about trucks going down Philadelphia or down Pennsylvania Avenue. But it doesn't always happen. Seen that in the past.
So Scott, you'll, you're the one to follow up with that? Or like, how does that work when we have to deal with the Falls Supervisors?
Well, it sounds like the mayor had a conversation with the Falls Township Supervisors. Mayor, did you discuss with them how we would follow up on this?
No, Mr. Manager, I did not. Actually, they reached out to me. Like I said, I have a very good working relationship with their president over there. To follow up and to bring any concerns to them, I'd be more than happy to do. I mean, it looks, I, I like that there's a plan and there's concerns, but don't forget, council, that these are very preliminary. They were not granted anything, no permits, no yes vote of anything. This is just concepts. And I wanted to share that they brought the traffic plan with them, and it is in PennDOT's hands now.
I'll, I'll reach out to the Falls Township manager and we'll figure something out.
And who owns the Cloverleaf property? The RDA does, correct?
I believe the RDA...
I saw our borough...
I believe the RDA has title to most of it, yes.
I saw our borough employees cutting the grass there. Why are we cutting the grass?
I don't, we don't, do, John, do we mow that all the time or was that a fluke? Wasn't that in response to a complaint? And I thought we were cutting trees, not grass.
What property is that?
The Cloverleaf.
The old Cloverleaf property? Yeah, we've been, we've been cutting that for, actually, for years.
Oh, have you? Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I thought you knew. I didn't, no, we've been cutting it for years.
That might be part of the deal the RDA and the borough had way back. This, this has been going on for
Tackies?
20 years, I think.
Yeah, as long as I can remember.
Can we look into that, why, why we're cutting the grass?
I, I think it was part of our deal with the RDA.
Yeah, can we just verify that? Okay, all right. And is there a way to move those, those ugly bricks from that area? Like, why are those bricks up there?
Which bricks?
There are those, John, what are those white bricks called?
Like, the big roadblocks? Jersey barriers?
Oh, the Jersey barriers?
Yeah, they're like Jersey barriers. They're not Jersey barriers, they're just concrete blocks.
Yeah, they, they make the area look really bad.
It's up to council. They also keep people from trespassing back there with vehicles, right? Yeah, like any other problem, I guess you could, down the park, same thing, people are, they want to drive on there, they're gonna drive on there. I mean, do they, we need them? I don't know. I don't know if we need them or not. I could use them somewhere else.
Fantastic.
Just saying, you know. But technically, are they even ours?
Yeah, I don't know if they're the RDA's or ours, we'll have to find out.
I know we've borrowed a few occasionally from time to time to put somewhere else if we needed them in an emergency and then put them back.
I really knew what Justin said, but did he talk about illegal dumping or no?
No.
No.
What did he say?
That he was talking about keeping trespassers out of the Cloverleaf property.
Okay, well, I, I agree with it. We're not gonna keep those barriers, how, how do we keep people out? More people from dumping.
Shall we proceed?
Yes.
Is Chief McClay on?
Chief McClay is here. Chief, just make sure that microphone's on. I'm not sure it is.
Yes, it is. Hey, good evening, council. It's nice to be back. Update on our manpower. Jason Cerrier, who is one of our part-time officers, resigned this past week. He went on to be a full-time investigator with the Department of Labor. So he returned to the federal workforce. Currently, we have eight full-time officers plus myself working. One full-time officer is at IOD. We have seven part-time officers and one part-time officer.
I can't, I don't know if anybody else can.
No, I can't.
Can you, switch your microphone up and talk to him?
I know this is not a legal question, legal area, but if we all commute ourselves, it'll give us a better shot. And so then if you want to speak, of course, unmute yourself.
Good suggestion.
Take it from the top, Chief.
Okay, we'll do it one more time. One of my officers, Jason Sosier, resigned this past week. He left to go to a full-time job with the Department of Labor. He's returning to the federal workforce that he worked for before. Our current department manpower is as follows. We have eight full-time officers, plus myself. We have one full-time officer who's at IOD. We have seven part-time officers, and we have one part-time officer who was out, also out. He's actually long-term IOD. Talk about the march on July 11th, it was very peaceful, went on without incident. Like the mayor described, we had three groups that day, which was sort of a surprise to us, at least one of the groups. I'd like to thank my officers, they did a tremendous job that day, as well as officers from Tellytown, Falls, Middletown, Lower Magfield, for making it a very peaceful day for Morrisville. I also like to thank the MERC team that was stationed in town, which most people didn't know we had them here, but we did have a large contingency, just in case if things went south. Prior to March 11th, there were several remarks made on social media where I'm referred to as the cop, that stated that I gave the park away to a social justice group. As we all know, reservations for the park doesn't come from my office. It comes from code. That is their function. I was informed that proper forms were sent out to this group, and yes, I did indeed reach out to them to get information about what was going to go on with the march, which proved to be very helpful. So no, I did not give away the park. There was never a discussion of fees or rules of the park. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that. I want to thank all the citizens for the letters and the phone calls that we got after the march. Everybody was very happy with the way things turned out. COVID-19. Our supply of PPE and sanitizer at this point were in very good shape, and I will continue to buy more or get it from the county as they have it. I'd like the Council to be aware that our police officers worked every day during the pandemic, and we still are working every day. While the borough officers were shut down and all the other departments were working half-days or half-weeks, the officers didn't miss a day during the shutdown. I'd like to suggest that Council maybe in the future recognize these officers for stepping up during the crisis and doing what we needed to do. With that, thank you.
Chief, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So the groups, some of the groups that were protesting, they're looking to do a citizen police review board. Is that something they should contact you and the mayor about?
Yes, they should.
Okay.
And that's going to have to be, I would think, voted on by Council, to see whether they want to do something like that, and that's going to be a standing committee or how that would work. I've met with a couple of the residents that had sent letters in after George Floud was killed, about our, what we do, our directives and things like that. And I had a couple of meetings with people, and it was very successful, and they left with a whole different idea of what policing is all about and what we do, and the rules that actually affect us. But if anybody, I've always said, my door's open. Anybody has any questions or want to come in and talk about our directives, our policies, what we do, how we do it in the, in the borough, I'd love for anybody to come in. But I'm more than willing to have any kind of review board. You gotta, it's, sometimes they morph into some other things, and you have to have very qualified people to do things like that, because you're looking at laws that are federal and state and local laws, and they have to be, you know, it can't be a radical mission, it has to be a work in progress. But my door is always open, anybody who wants to come in.
So if you have conversations with these groups and you start formulating a plan, you'll bring it to Council, or?
If anybody comes to me and asks me to do it, absolutely. But I haven't had anybody come to me and ask me, and I stood out there all day, and I spoke to everybody, and everybody was very happy and very thankful the department was there. At this point, there was no further discussion. I know that's something that's going around the country about police review boards and things like that. But like I said, my door is always open. So a lot of times, just a question-answer session alleviates a lot of fear of what the police, you know, the directives and what our policies are and what direction we go in.
So I noticed also, I have one other question, then I'll let you go. I know that you had provided a directive based on firearms and the tasers. Do we have, I was looking through some of the directives, I couldn't find it, maybe our, maybe there isn't one, maybe there is. Do you have a directive based on like oppressive behavior or bullying of residents by the officers?
I don't even know how that would even be written. What you, what the two directives you got this time, that I asked for to be moved along so we can get those in, was use of force and deadly use of force.
Right.
So, were bullying or something, where were?
Well, a lot of that, that's what people complain about in town on social media, their writing where officers are oppressive, they're bullying, they're kind of nasty. So do we have any directives based on that?
I wouldn't even know where even to start something like that. That's where we have citizen complaints forms, and they're there. And like I said, we have very few complaints that really ever come in per year. And at the end of this year, I'll, I'll show you the few complaints that we did get. But social media is social media, and you got to take that with a grain of salt, if you would, please.
Right. Well, sometimes you have to listen to what social media says.
Every day.
Yeah.
I do. Every day. And that's where I received what was going on with the marches. And from there, I was able to contact the people that were doing it, and we had very good, four or five emails that went back and forth of how we were going to handle everything and how they were going to handle everything. And it worked out very well.
Okay. That was it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else for the chief? Okay, is our junior councilperson available?
Nope.
I don't believe we have the junior councilperson this evening.
Okay.
Yeah, school year's over too.
Move on to the action items. Item 9A. I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Morrisville School District regarding school violence prevention program grant from the U.S. Department of Justice.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion?
It's Mike, may I, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. This question's actually for Scott. I know when we were first hearing about this, there was conversations of us getting reports on the spending. Have we received anything, or has no spending occurred yet?
There's been no spending, to my knowledge, because we haven't received any funds yet.
Fair enough. Thank you.
This is Mr. Bowers, I have a couple of questions too.
Yes, Mr. Bowers.
Mr. Mitchell, have we initiated any such conversations with Holy Trinity? I'd assume we were going to have a similar MOU with them.
I know conversations have been had with Holy Trinity. I also know that their principal retired recently. But no, I think the idea was to get the MOU in place with the school district first, and then to do a similar one with Holy Trinity.
Okay. And my next question...
I can mention about Holy Trinity. You're right, the former principal has retired as a principal. She's still working there part-time as curriculum coordinator. So she's still on property. So I'm sure she's very much involved in whatever's happening.
And my next question is...
We're going to put together an MOU for Trinity as well, to cover their share. Correct? Again. This is only intended to cover...
This is only the school.
...the funds that are attributable to the...
Yeah, we wanted to have this done a couple of months ago. As you know, we've had some issues. We've sent, I guess, disbarred, but we've had multiple, multiple emails and phone calls. And finally, we were able to get them to respond to us, and that's why we're able to put it on the agenda for tonight. I don't think it'll be as, I think the parochial school will be a lot easier to deal with. This is approved, assuming Council chooses to approve.
Okay. Back to the motion. Any other comments or questions?
Actually, I think Mr. Bowers wasn't quite finished yet.
Justin, go ahead.
So I was reviewing the solicitor's invoice, and I see we've charged, he's charged some time to, you know, multiple back-and-forths with the school district's attorneys. And I know this grant was sold at no cost to the borough. I'm just curious, is there any thoughts or any, any wording in the MOU? I don't think I've noticed it, for the schools to cover our attorney costs to review these agreements? Because if we did not have this grant, we would not be paying these monies to the solicitor.
So is the question, is the attorney fees able to come out of the money? Is that...
No, I'm kind of asking if we've talked to the school about reimbursing us for our attorney fees.
Oh, having the schools reimburse? Okay.
Yeah, because it's essentially their grant that's going through us. So we're having to foot a bill for our attorney to review it for the borough's best interests.
Well, it, maybe there's something in the grant that allows for admin or something like that, for those that, I know that Darla said she was going to do it pro bono, but there still might be something in there that would be able to be reimbursed.
I think we certainly can submit, or Scott can submit, any of our legal bills, as far as that goes, and hopefully we'll be reimbursed. We'll deal with it afterwards, but I don't know why that wouldn't be, why that isn't possible.
And that, but that's reimbursable out of the grant. We're not asking the school district.
Correct.
So we'll make that clear.
I guess, yes, correct. We're asking schools. I know the schools, the school also has terrible financial...
Exactly.
We don't want to make them any... Okay, yes.
Anything else, Mr. Bowers? Anybody else? Okay, can we vote on the motion? This will be a roll call, I presume?
Yes.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Drysbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Drysbach?
Yes.
Ms. Alahoe?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to 9B. I have a motion to authorize the sale of thorough-owned property located at 30 Hillcrest Avenue, to authorize the issuance of written notice to the tenant pursuant to the terms of the lease agreement, and to authorize the administration to enter into an agreement with the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment of the property. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
I, I think that this has to be two, two motions, actually. One, whether we want to sell the property, and two, to whom we want to sell the property. Because we could actually sell it to the highest bidder, or we could sell it to the RDA.
Well, remember, the RDA isn't interested in buying the property, or even owning the property. They're a temporary caretaker while they entertain proposals for the redevelopment of the property that the borough would have to approve.
But I think Council needs to decide if they want to do it to the highest bidder or the RDA.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so I think this needs to be two motions.
Okay. We can...
I don't know who is...
Mr. Vice President?
My, my question is...
My question is, is with the RDA being a temporary caretaker, my question is, how long is temporary?
Because, because we were just talking about...
We were just talking about the Cloverleaf property before, and that seems like it's sitting down there forever. I get stuff, it's not going to move overnight, but if the RDA takes over this property on Hillcrest, it could be ten years before something happens with it. People in, people in town, people that live on Hillcrest want to see something. They want, they want their neighborhood to look nice. I don't know if the RDA, if they share that same feeling.
Mr. Paul?
Yes?
If I can. I just, well, actually, my first question is for Mr. Mitchell. It's $1 in lieu of condemnation. What, what does, what does that mean? And we're also waiving our rights to the eminent domain code. So how does that all fit into the actual handing over of the dollar? And what happens when we do that? Like, what, what's the process? We, we complete this, they get the dollar, and then they move on and look for somebody?
Well, we've, before I turn it over to the solicitor for the legal component of this, remember, a couple of parties have already expressed interest in this property. A private builder and also Habitat for Humanity. So the RDA, the only role the RDA would play is a temporary caretaker to solicit these proposals so that the borough can have some say in what the ultimate use is of the property. As for the legal component, Randy, do you want to chime in on this?
I'll take it, Scott. So the legal issue, the issue was the question of the deed in lieu of condemnation. Really, this is just an issue for a matter of title. While the title report came back clean and there are no issues, it's just easier, safer with the Redevelopment Authority, which has the power of eminent domain and condemnation to take the property, which means there will be no title issues at all. The saying that we're giving up our rights under the eminent domain, it's, it's a condemnation. It's amicable. It's meaning we're agreeing to do this, that we're going to work with the RDA to get this into hands of a competent redevelopment, versus the idea that we're waiving our rights under the eminent domain code. It just deals with the value, which is really going to happen when this is turned over to a developer and the development process goes forward.
If I may, again.
Let me ask a question first, Ms. Sherlock.
Yes.
Does that, does that mean then, are we going to, is, is Council going to be asked for a second motion if and when the RDA finds a buyer, and then we will approve that particular sale? Or does that follow along with this authorization we're doing today?
No.
The RDA can come back to us.
My understanding, in having dealt with a lot of these situations, is the borough will have the final say on who the property is transacted with, and whatever their plan is to redevelop it at its highest, best use for property tax purposes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yes, Ms. Sherlock.
Just, just a couple of things. It seems that the eminent domain comes into play quite a bit with the RDA. And I know that's just a way of them acquiring these properties, but it doesn't seem like this borough, this council has any, you know, appetite or desire to do anything other than get rid of this property. Like, I don't see anybody thinking about actually fixing the property and then making it available to multiple community groups. So that being said, then I, I think we should sell it. But just a reminder also that we want to do this for, you know, to get it back on the tax rolls, which I understand. But just a reminder, if they put two homes there, that means probably about $3,000 a year for taxes for the borough. I didn't add school, and I didn't add county. So if, if we want to give this property up for about $3,000 a year and not have a little bit of green space, then I say we can move forward. But it's just something to ponder, that's all. Because I do, I do believe that it's a, it's a small green space, and I know that, you know, it's, it's not causing anybody any problems being there. In fact, people like the idea that they can have a little bit of green space somewhere.
Yeah, well, if I can, I think you're right. Selling the property monetarily doesn't light our world on fire, because you're going to get a little bit in purchase proceeds from the sale, but the value of the property is, is in the land and not in the structure that currently exists. In fact, it would have to be demolished, so it's more of a liability. And then, as you said, it's going to be a little bit of tax revenue every year, so...
And that's on the high end.
Yeah.
So...
But it's just something to ponder, that's all. Because I do believe that it's a small green space, and I know that, you know, it's not causing anybody any problems being there. In fact, people like the idea that they have a little bit of green space somewhere.
Yeah, well, if I can, I think you're right. Selling the property monetarily doesn't light our world on fire, because you're going to get a little bit in purchase proceeds from the sale, but the value of the property is in the land and not in the structure that currently exists. In fact, it would have to be demolished, so it's more of a liability. And then, as you said, it's going to be a little bit of tax revenue every year, so.
And that's on the high end.
Yeah.
And that's if they can put two homes there yet, which we don't know for sure.
Correct.
Although it appears to be wide enough for two smaller properties. So it's just thoughts to ponder.
Lock away, there's a lot of green space now where we took MRider down.
Okay. I agree, I lead, but, you know, all things don't end at MRider.
This is a policy decision that council has to make. You know, it's not a legal issue, obviously. The procedure itself is routine. I mean, in Bristol Township, I do this 10 and 20 times a year. We're, the reason why we got, we had like 220 properties until we're banned, and we're down to like, I don't know, 40, 50, or 60, whatever the number is, keeps dropping. And we've done it through the RDA. It's like a revolving money. It doesn't cost us anything. We funded in the beginning, they sell it for as much as they can, we get our money back, and the properties of the last one they did, I was involved with, they took down a rat-infested hellhole that looked like a hobbit house. And there's, they, no, really, you couldn't tell it was a house there. A Levittown house, it just looked like a tree. And it was a sad story, because the woman just sort of died, and nobody found her for weeks. It was just every horrendous thing you can imagine. But the house, they built a beautiful two-story house, and they sold it, I think, what was it, Scott, was it like 375, 350, 400, some, a really good amount of money. Place is beautiful now, and the neighbors, of course, are much happier. So that's.
I wouldn't imagine the neighbors would be unhappy with anything, any buildings there. I'm not opposing that. Just as Scott had said, when I figured out a moderate tax to the borough, it would be probably for two homes, about $3,000.
Randy, how long?
It's not the fantasy, that's all.
Randy, how long did that process take in Bristol from the?
That was a very complicated one. It took us a couple of years, only because we had the deed to the property was not, wasn't done like F.A.
The reason I ask is, is the description of it being a rat hole, rat in a hole, or whatever. We have an actual property, let's see, with rats in it, down by the river. It's called on three years right now, that the RDA has been, had their hands in.
I don't, I can't, I don't want to, because obviously, I'm not part of your administration, I'm just doing the legal work on this. I'm just telling you that our experience in the township has been a tremendous success with them in turning over. And what's happened is, once you start condemning a few properties, and the banks know you're serious, and the property owners know you're serious, they start fixing them up rather than lose them. And that's what, so we found, it was a two-edged, we not only fixed up many, many houses on our own, when I say the RDA, sold it to private enterprise, and they created jobs and all that, but in addition to which, the banks even got very serious. You know, they thought we were kidding in the beginning, and they found out they could lose their property and lose all their equity. So they started fixing it up. A lot of them now, the banks jumped on it, because they realized there's money to be made themselves, and have fixed it up. So that's just, as to this property, it's your choice.
I appreciate that success story, but we don't have, the building's not rat-infested. So just a reminder that it may not look, you know, very current, but it's still a usable piece of property. But I, I'm done, I have made all my comments, so I apologize for the time, and I guess we'll just move on.
Mr. Vice President, we're certainly in no race to make this decision. If council feels that it needs more time to chew on this to reach a decision, we can postpone this until next month. Also, I'm not sure it's.
What did you say, Mr. Vice President? I'm sorry. I think we should vote on this. Okay.
Also, I'm not sure it's an apple, apple to apples comparison, to compare it to the cloverleaf property, which was the town dump and is environmentally challenged. And I know over 15 or 20-year period, there's probably been 10 or 12 concepts proposed for it that could never be worked out for different reasons, so.
Now, property needs, what, a million dollars worth of environmental remediation?
Unless somebody has a reason that they'd like to have another month to think about this, I think we should vote and move on.
All right. If I might, may, Mr. Paul?
Was there a motion on this? I don't remember.
Mr. Paul, if I may, unless you're foreclosing discussion?
No.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So I just want to, I just want to put it out there like this. I am a huge advocate for redevelopment. I think this town needs it more than most towns in Bucks County. However, there's a timing element here where we're literally not considering the Marsville Little Bulldogs. I know it was brought up in our last meeting, but we're in a situation where a school may be cutting back on the availability for sports, and we're going to even cut back further? I think it's a mistake. I think it's bad timing for something that can get us $3,000 a year. I think we really need to consider the impact to the children that won't have the opportunity to play that sport, because there really is no other option for them. Thank you.
Has the Little Bulldogs not found a place yet?
Not to my knowledge.
Did they not suspend their season already? Did they say it was too late? I thought Mr. Larsson said that.
I am not aware whether or not they're going to have their flag football season or any other sport. They don't go through council for that, they rent from the school.
They sent any of us an update on to where they stood with anything?
I haven't asked them for it, no.
So if I understand, Mike, that's sort of, you're leaning toward, maybe we shouldn't do this right now, right?
That would be correct, yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I believe it's bad timing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
I'm actually okay letting it go through the season. Maybe we can vote on this in October or November.
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second it.
Okay. Want to vote? So we need to vote on the motion?
Motion to table, takes priority, and that should be voted on first. If the motion carries, motion is tabled.
Okay, should we do a roll call on this?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to do a roll call vote on the motion to table. And that motion was made by Ms. Dreisbach?
I seconded it.
Ms. Dreisbach, Ms. Halaho. Very good. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Halaho?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Guys had broad agreement tonight.
I have a question on this solicitor.
Ted's not here.
Can we table something twice in a row?
Blame it on Ted.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to 9C. I can get a motion to authorize the refinancing of TD Bank term loan of $912,730 from 2.99% interest rate to 1.62%, and to authorize the borough manager to execute the necessary documents to do that.
So moved.
Second. Well done.
Any discussion?
I'd like to have Mr. Mitchell explain this a little bit for us and the public.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Save us money. Say it.
Mr. Bowers asked if I could add some context to the situation. This is the debt instrument that the borough has, its term loan with TD Bank. This was used to finance a couple of projects, energy efficient project, energy efficiency projects here, and some, I believe, a street lighting project here, all of which predated me, so I don't know every detail about it. But we're reducing the interest rate from 2.99% to 1.62%. Unfortunately, it took a global pandemic and the resulting economic calamity to bring the interest rate down to where it made it worthwhile. This not only saves us the monthly interest expense on a monthly basis, but also the projected savings over the course of the term is about $78,000 to the borough. So it's certainly favorable to move ahead with it.
What's the remainder of the term?
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
And that lowers our yearly output, correct?
Yes.
Scott, what's the number of years of the remainder of the term?
I believe that was in your.
It looks 11?
Heck, it's. It will, the new note will mature in April of '31.
It'll be here before you know it.
Right around the corner.
I thought, Nancy, you were going to say that you wanted some of that 1.6 money too. I mean, because if someone wants to lend me the money at 1.6, I'm happy to have it.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the motion then? Any other comments, questions? Roll call?
All right, it was moved by Mr. Bowers, seconded by Mr. Jaeger. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Halaho?
Yes.
Mr., Parker's absent. Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Okay. Move on to 9D. May I have a motion to approve the request by the Marsville Borough Police Association to hold grievance filed by Corporal Michael Pitcher in abeyance pending the final disposition of the criminal charges filed against him?
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Second, please. Okay, any comments, questions?
I have a question, Mr. Paul. And it's for Mr. Mitchell. I don't know if you can answer this or not. Do we have any concept of what the financial impact is going to look like for this thing?
What was the question?
No idea?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question some people didn't hear it?
For the grievance process, for our portion of what we're going to have to shell out for this, any ideas on the cost? Any?
Well, it would be, it's going to be, holding it in abeyance, there's no cost. I mean, that's, it's just going to be on hold until after his criminal charge is clear. So other than, you know, the attorneys reviewing their request that they made, there's no cost.
Good, then, thank you.
All the costs will come later if it actually, if the grievance proceeds.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Do we know when, do we know when his trial is? Has it been scheduled?
I have not been, I have not been made aware of a new trial date.
Chief, do you know?
It's not been scheduled.
Mr. Paul, would you like me to call the roll?
Please.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Halaho?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now we move on to 9E. May I have a motion authorizing the borough engineer to prepare and submit a redevelopment assistance capital program grant application for construction funding for Patriots Park?
So moved.
Second.
Actually, if I can, Mr. Vice President, after we vote on this motion, can we actually vote on it again, but as a resolution? Because the borough engineer's office provided a resolution to us that was in your Friday delivery.
Right.
And we'll do both at one time, if that's okay?
Well, do we need to do the motion if we do the resolution?
Well, if the folks are willing, they could just amend the motion to state adopting a resolution authorizing the borough engineer to prepare, yada, yada, yada.
That sounds like a great idea. Thank you.
And now we can do it in one vote.
Perfect. Brilliant. Okay, any comments, questions?
Yes, I have just a few. I'm guessing that Mr. Mitchell can answer some of them. And looking at the guidelines for this, our ACP, is this going to be done through the RDA? When, looking at the guidelines and who can actually apply, it appears as if it's a redevelopment authority that can apply.
No, municipal governments can apply.
Municipal government?
Yeah, municipal governments can apply. Actually, to your point, though, and to Mr. Robinson's from earlier, I believe the Redevelopment Authority is resubmitting a previously submitted application for the environmental capping required for the cloverleaf property to the tune of about $1 million. But that's separate and apart from us and what we're doing.
Okay, now, it talks about match. Now, I realize we're going to try to layer some things, but did I read that correctly, that this is a $3 million?
Well, actually, the borough engineer is here. Kurt, do you want to take to the podium and enlighten us? Because I've heard a couple of numbers used ranging from a million and a half to 3 million. Where are you guys landing this thing?
So we've been back and forth on the amount to request the last several days.
Can you talk closer to the mic? Very hard to hear.
Pull the mic and put it like, you might have to lower your mask. We're all masked up here.
Yeah, so we've been back and forth on the amount to ask for the last several days, but we've sort of concluded that we recommend applying for the full $3 million. That's the allocation that we put in for this at the beginning of the year. And while we do not think the state would fund that full amount, we think strategically that's the right amount to ask for, presuming that they're going to, you know, give it a little haircut and fund whatever they can.
Am I the only one that you can't hear? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm talking into it as closely as I can. Hopefully, you can hear me better. But we're recommending applying for the full 3 million, expecting that the state may not fund that full amount. With regard, Nancy, to your question about the match, there is a 50% match requirement. Our experience has been that that can come in many forms. We are seeking additional funds from other fund sources for construction, but we're also hoping that if successful, we can work with the Commonwealth to view some of the money that's been spent so far to date towards that match. We've received numerous county and state and federal funds over the years through the development of this initiative. And if we can pledge that funding as well as what the program allows us to do, which is also show the appraised value of the property towards the match, we're hopeful that we can accumulate enough match money to compel this Commonwealth to not require any additional out-of-pocket funds. So we recommend putting in the full 3 million. It costs the same amount of money to apply for a million and a half versus 3 million. We don't expect to get the full 3 million. The RAC program is funded this year. We've heard that it's funded pretty well. The governor's looking to put this program out and hopes to make some sizable awards. If we're going to land, you know, a seven-figure grant, this is probably the bucket of money where we have the best chance of doing that. We've been in touch with Senator Santa Serra's office, as well as State Rep Perry Warren's office. And, you know, as everyone knows, this property is one of the most heavily followed projects that Marshall has going on right now. A lot of people are pushing behind the scenes for this, so we're hopeful that this is a worthwhile effort.
Awesome.
If I may, Mr. Paul? Thank you, Kurt. My understanding is that funds from other state sources, including legislative sources, cannot be used. So you had mentioned something about federal, but I don't know that you can add them. them unless it's a pass-through. So the CBDG can be used because it's a pass-through to DCED. So I don't know how much money we have invested in the CBDG.
Actually, CDBG is federal.
And it comes through the county.
But it's administered by the county. It's not DCED.
But there's also, you're correct, that some state grants don't allow you to match against other state grants, but that's not always the case. There are some programs that do complement others, both from state levels. This RACP money is, is one of the ones that tends to have somewhat, somewhat the most flexibility. So again, you know, it's a matter of trying to make the request, trying to land the money, and then meeting with folks at the Commonwealth who, this program's been around for a very long time, and, and I found that, you know, many different circumstances often, when you lay it all out on the table, sometimes they find flexibility in, in helping it work for your, your own situation. So I think that, again, you know, with any grant application, with any program, there's no certainty that, that we'll be successful. But if you don't shoot, you can't score, and, you know, we've had a pretty good track record of hitting some baskets, you know, recently with this traffic signal grant program. We're very excited about, about that that just came in last week. And so, you know, this was something, like I said, beginning of the year, this was a recommendation. We had meetings with the state elected officials. They'd encouraged us to put in the prerequisite application that goes in at the end of the year. And then now is the time, we just found out about this, I wanna say, maybe two weeks ago, and the application is due August 13th. So they don't give you a lot of time. Fortunately, we're in a good position with a lot of information gathered on this project. We've received a lot of grant funding so far to get the design underway, so we have a pretty good idea what our order of magnitude construction costs will be. So hopefully, it's not too heavy of a lift to now get this application processed and out the door by the 13th of August.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions about costs, like the cost to us for, maybe premature, but the cost for, to us, for you writing it. And then they talk about the non-revers, non-reimbursable costs, actually, when the project has been, you know, already started. And so, I guess, guess you don't have to talk to that now, but like, you can't give back any admin costs, legal fees, any financing, accounting costs. So those are all gonna be somehow, figure out a way to eat them, I guess. And if we can use land, I mean, the 50% match is what the scary part is, which we're going for 3 million. But if we can assess the land quite high and use that as our collateral, that's not a bad idea, if, if they accept that, so.
Yeah, frankly, the, the application that's in front of us now, due on August 13th, is somewhat the easy part of the process. If you're successful in landing the funding, then the, the process of securing the funding is much more involved. There's a lot of paperwork that's associated with it, you know, we've gone through it before.
This is the one that it's like a three-step process?
Correct. There's things, there's tabs, if I remember PTSD from.
They have to award you first, and then when they give you an award, then you're able to submit an application. So, yes, we have to wait for the award first. But just to double check, Kurt, the, online, it says that the deadline is the 12th.
It may be the 12th, I'm sorry. It may have come out July 13th, and it's due August 12th. Yeah.
It started, it was open from July 13th to 12th of August. I just didn't, I didn't want you to put it a day too late.
Yeah, thank you. Not that we've ever done that before. You've been pretty good, maybe once.
All right, then, thank you.
So actually, there was a question about the application cost. You can speak to that, can't you?
Yeah, I apologize. Scott, I know you asked me the question, and I know I gave you an answer. I don't recall off the top of my head. It's a few thousand dollars to put the application in. It would be more, again, not unlike other answers to questions that I've, I've made similarly in the past. But the fortunate thing is, like I said, we do have concept drawings. We do have preliminary design drawings. So we're able to extract, using the grant money that we've already secured and are working through currently, we've already gathered a lot of that information. So we don't have to spend a lot of borough out-of-pocket funds to develop that information. It already exists through the work of the design grant funds that have been secured. So the cost to the borough now is exclusively the cost of preparing and filing the application. You know, we'll probably gather some letters of support, and we'll gather other ancillary things that go into the, to the application form that it'll get filed. So a few thousand dollars out-of-pocket is what I would expect. And I, it's hard to give you an exact cost, because until we kind of dig into it, sometimes they change their applications throughout the year, you know, from year to year. But I would expect it to be a couple thousand dollars in, in effort.
And if I could add to that, you're talking about the support. I can tell you, from my conversations with county and state officials, they highly support this project. It is a shovel-ready project that they wanna see get done.
So Kurt, let me play devil's advocate here, and I won't say it's the worst-case scenario, but a bad-case scenario is, we apply for this grant, we get the three, the full 3 million dollars. We can't find any matching funds for construction, so we can't find our own 3 million dollars. However, we have, we've paid $5,000, we got the grant, maybe we have $50,000 in our recreation fund, or $100,000 in our recreation fund. So we walk out with $100,000 of our own money, minus 5,000, we pay 95,000, and we still get 100, or we get a matching $100,000 on that, because it was a $100,000 grant. And we put our tail between our legs when we walk away, when we're said and done with the $100,000, and we probably won't be able to apply for that grant again, because they won't like giving out money that hasn't been spent. But at the end of the day, we still invested 5, $105,000 and got $100,000 extra.
In theory.
It's, it's a possibility. You know, I think the probability is a different scenario will play out. But I'm, I'm optimistic, I strongly recommend pursuing this. There is some flexibility in this program, that there's, there's multiple years of which the grant is good for. So even if we got it this year, this round, it's, you can, you can ask for extensions on the money. This, no grant program likes to give out money that doesn't get spent. They wanna see the money get spent. So one of the negatives that could come out, if you get a grant and you can't implement it, then it makes it more difficult in the future to, you get a reputation of not delivering on the grants, but, you know, knock on wood, we've not had that issue so far in Morrisville. We've been, you know, very successful in, in putting these, these grants together. And I gotta tell you, you know, Elora Das did an outstanding job. She's got one of the most comprehensive grant programs going in the county, and it's been, it's been fun to, to watch it play out, you know, because it's a lot of matching money against money, and, you know, like we said, some grants you can't match against the others, and it makes your head spin. But, but if you keep up on it and you keep at it, you know, good things happen, and that's what we're seeing right now.
I guess my point was, even the worst-case, almost worst-case scenario, worst-case scenario is, we get a grant, we do absolutely zero with it. Next to that, it's still 50% that we're not paying for, for something that we're working towards getting done irregardless, or regardless.
They're adding that to the, regardless is now a word.
Okay, any further comments? Questions? Shall we do a roll call?
Has this been moved and seconded?
Yes.
We did, but then you have to, we were gonna amend it for the resolution. Okay, so it's been amended. Who moved and who seconded?
I, I think I seconded.
Eileen moved, Mike seconded.
I think I seconded.
Eileen moved it. Do we have a volunteer to be the second?
Me, me the second.
Mr. Paul.
Robert.
Bob.
If I can do that in my, in my dual capacity as chairperson and councilperson.
Absolutely. Shall I call the roll?
Please do, sir.
Mr. Bowers, yes. Mrs. Dreisbach.
Yes.
Ms. Halaho.
Yes.
Mr. Park, uh, Mr. Parker's absent. Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock.
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to item 9F. May I get a motion to approve the 2020-2021 gasoline and diesel annual bid contract through the Bucks County Consortium? And Mr. Celester, do I need to, should I read all of the rates set forth here for good form?
It's your choice, either way.
We'll just say the rates set forth on, on, on the agenda of your material.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Was there a second?
Oh, sorry, whatever.
It was moved by Mr. Jaeger, seconded by Ms. Halaho.
Okay.
Questions, comments? Let's go to the roll call.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mrs. Dreisbach.
Yes.
Ms. Halaho.
Yes.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock.
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Lovely. And finally, item 9G. May I get a motion to approve recognizing September 2020 as ovarian cancer awareness month, along with support of hanging ribbons on trees around Morrisville Borough and the term, the town's key awareness campaign?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Is the mayor still with us?
Mr. Mayor, are you still with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, he's on the conference call line.
Oh, was there, was there something regarding the proclamation, or can we read that next month?
Well, we normally do the proclamation during the month, not, not early.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Bowers, yes. Mrs. Dreisbach.
Yes.
Ms. Halaho.
Yes.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Sher, Mrs. Sherlock.
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger.
Yes.
It was close.
Thank you. So now we move on to unfinished business. Does anyone have unfinished business to present? If not, I'll note that on Friday, we had the hearing with Gina Cusson appealing his 15,000, the 30,000 dollar fine that, that he was hit with, with our local court in February, and the, the court in Doylestown reduced the, the fine to 4,500 dollars. I don't know whether the Borough Manager, do you have any further report on this, or does anyone else have anything else they wanna add?
I, I don't have anything to add. I was gonna discuss that along with a few other things in executive session.
Ah, okay, well, when I say it's just all a matter of public records, I think there's any. I also think it's important to keep the issues of Gina Cusson and the Party House before the public portion of this meeting, as well as the private, so. Thank you for indulging me. Anything else in the unfinished business category? Okay, how about new business?
I'd like to add something. I noticed that some of the neighbors were telling me that Keystone is still walking around and marking up sidewalks. I'm wondering if we could have a motion for them to pause that program due to COVID and people, financial difficulties in trying to get their sidewalks fixed?
Actually, you can do the motion, but just if I could comment, all of the deadlines related to the curb and sidewalk program have been extended because of the COVID, so.
Some of the neighbors were telling me that, that they're still marking up sidewalks. Well, I, I would like them to pause until after COVID is done.
Okay.
That, that's my motion, if anybody else agrees.
You need a second for that, or can that just be done administratively?
I'll second that if it's a motion.
Okay. What would determine the end of COVID? Sorry to ask that question, but.
Depends who you ask, Nancy.
I mean, it could be, could be the end of the year, really, right?
Yeah.
I guess we'll have to come back, come back to it. If we vote yes on this, we'll just have to come back to it, I suppose. Because no one really knows. By the way, I apologize, I haven't turned the light on, as you can tell. Looks like I'm doing a Blair Witch project.
Does this really need to be a motion, or can we just authorize?
I, I think, I would do, Eileen, they could just administratively ask him to, you know, halt it.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second.
Is everyone in agreement?
No. Absolutely not.
Does anyone know? Was it done by motion originally?
We, I think we have a motion and a second, don't we?
Well, there is a motion and a second on the table.
There's no, and is there, just, just for clarification, are you saying to the end of the year? When, when, is, are you setting it, is there a date on that, just to make it? And you can always come back and revisit it. That's why I'm asking. Are you saying to, through December 31st of this year, or?
What, why don't we do it till December 31st, and we revisit it in January?
So you want your, so you want, you want to amend your motion and say through January 31, uh, December 31st, and then, of course, if December comes and things are just as terrible, you could then file another, make another motion to extend it further? Is that what you're, I mean, I'm not trying to put, whatever your motion is, your motion is, I just wanna understand it.
I think having a definitive end date is a good thing in the motion. Even if it's.
Paul, no, but I, but it's, I, I think, Ms. Halaho, you, you made the motion, so I wanna make sure that that's agreeable to you.
Yeah, December, December. We can have it till December 31st and revisit it in January's meeting?
Okay, so, so I, so I understand it for the, for the acting president, you want to, you're amending your motion, in a sense, to say, you wanna halt, put a halt to it through December 31st of this year, 2020.
Is that right, Helen?
Is that correct? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
It's hard to hear you, so I, I wasn't sure you were talking to me.
Is it amended?
I can, yes, but I, since Scott was the second, I just figured.
Oh, was he, oh, okay.
Yeah, but Scott was the second.
Would someone, would someone kindly restate the full motion for me? I really, I couldn't follow it completely. What's, what is, what is the motion at hand?
Are we slamming?
We direct Keystone to stop marking sidewalks at this time until such, until such time that COVID is over, until.
I thought it's until December 31st.
December 31st, I don't say, can we say due to COVID? I mean, I don't know, it's, it is a factor. All right, skip COVID, then. Ellen, it's short, just go ahead.
Yeah, it's Helen's motion, so I don't wanna.
Right ahead.
I, I would like the motion to be to, to direct Keystone to pause marking up the sidewalks until December 31st due to the COVID and expenses to the residents. I guess would add to be revisited by council in January of 2021.
That has, that doesn't.
Well, you have to, I mean, the bottom, as, as Randy says, if, come December, if we're ready, if we're not ready to end it, we have to extend it in December, not, we can't wait till January to do that.
Right.
In other words, it will automatically expire December 31st.
Okay, till December, then.
Till you, till, then in December, you can reconsider.
So did Scott agree to the revision?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we in discussion yet?
Any, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, if I might. So a couple, a couple of things on this. When I first got on council a couple of years ago, one of the things I did was a whole lot of research on some towns that were able to turn themselves around. And one of the, one of the examples I'll give is a, is a town in North Jersey. It's, it's much larger than us. It's Morristown, New Jersey. And I watched over, over the course of a decade, them go from having empty housing, really bad facilities when it comes to stores, a lot of empty store. really bad facilities when it comes to stores, a lot of empty storefronts. And what it came down to is a 10-year turnaround that started in one spot, and it started in code enforcement, and it started with allowing a professional code enforcement company to do what they do, and to change the perception of the town by enforcing rules that are important to everyone. And I understand, I've gotten complaints, and long before COVID, I got complaints about marking up sidewalks, right? And I also got complaints about people's sidewalks from neighbors who had nice sidewalks going, why is this allowed? So it does go both ways, right? It depends on what side of that issue you're on. If you're spending money on your home, and you just spent a bunch of money to get those sidewalks and those curbs repaired, and you're proud of what it looks like, and right next door to you, it's, it's a mess, you're going to complain about that. So there's always going to be a complaint, but the question that, that this council has to ask, and, and part of it is, is a, is a direction, I guess, that this council I don't see really has, is what's our goal? Is our goal to step the, the town up, or to allow it to just stay the way it is? So if our goal is to allow it to stay the way it is, then yeah, you could say because of COVID, but in reality, people were complaining years before COVID was, was a thing. So then, then what we're really voting on is allowing people to, to, to let their properties deteriorate. And if that's what we want to do, that's fine, I'm not in favor of that, and, and I get that, that we're extending the timeline because of COVID, and I'm all on board with that, that's already been done. I don't see the need to tell a professional organization that's really done a decent job for this town, and, and put some good things in place, that they're not allowed to do their job, that we hired them to do, which is enforce what's required from a, from a property condition perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, Mrs. Sherlock.
Thank you, Mike, for your comments, and I do get it that it could start at each home. Did you say Morristown?
Morristown, New Jersey, yes.
Which, which, is that, is that Morris?
Morris County, New Jersey, not Morristown, Morristown, up north Jersey.
Morristown, New Jersey.
Have you been up there?
Yes, actually, my wife grew up there.
One of the wealthiest communities in New Jersey, and that's beside the fact. It's hard to make those comparisons.
I'm not comparing us to them, I'm comparing what they did, and how they turned it around, and what they needed to do to turn it around. That's, that's kind of parallel to everything. If you have a course of action, regardless of how wealthy you are or poor you are, if you take that same direction, that same path, you'll get the same results in theory, right?
Here's something that Bristol Township did a while back, now it wasn't sidewalks, but it was curbs. They, they wanted to enforce curbs, and how they did that was they sort of assessed each curb, and you were allowed to pay on time, you know, on time. But what they did is, because it was, you know, township-wide, it ended up being very inexpensive for everybody to, to fix what they needed to fix. So there were curbs, brand-new curbs all, all over, you know, Bristol Township.
Well, that was because most of Bristol Township didn't have curbs.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure the MMA tried that and got a lot of complaints.
Although, there's a lot of sections in Bristol Township that have never had curbs. This is, this was a curb program.
They're the wealthier, they're the wealthier towns, right, Randy? The gates, the gates have no curbs because they don't sidewalk.
Well, the gates are Middletown Township, that's not Bristol Township.
Bristol Township is an enormous township, obviously.
There are parts that croyed it, whatever, there were parts that had curbs, parts that didn't have curbs, most, a lot of it had curbs. They had deteriorated. They, you know, they had roads because they had.
Well, they were, you know, 50, 50 years.
They had roads that hadn't been paved since 2011, so, yeah, they needed a little work.
I'm sorry, so I digress for just a moment, but this gets us, this gets us back to something that we talked about at the beginning of the year, and that was actually getting a different type of code enforcement, getting someone on the ground, someone who was, was not just, you know, focusing on the sidewalks, but someone who could focus on a number of issues, trash, you know, there's more than just trash, don't get me wrong, but I, I think that there's room for discussion regarding our future with Keystone also, but that was something that we discussed early on. We didn't seem to get any other, word, we, we talked about getting a job description, but I don't think we finished that up and moved that forward, but just to keep that in mind, it's something for the future, not for the season.
So if I might ask you, Nancy, are you suggesting we go back to what we had for two decades prior that worked so well?
I believe someone with boots on the ground does work well, Mike.
Which is what, which is what we did for two decades prior, and it did so well. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're going to have to differ on this.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
What are the differences between two decades ago and the last two years?
We have, we have a professional organization doing the job for us, and there's no, there's no favoritism, there's no, I know this guy, so I'm going to let him off the hook, I don't like this person, so I'm not going to let them off the hook, same complaints we always heard.
If you drive from the Wendy's on 13th and 14th down to the cemetery in a manner, drive through town, tell me what you would see differently between two decades ago and the last two years.
Paved roads, let's see, I don't see, you're asking, I mean, listen, Scott, I'm not going to sit here and argue with you, if you're, if you're, if you're just going to, I am putting down two decades ago. What was wrong? Things weren't getting done. That's, things weren't getting done, Scott.
Our administrative community.
We have professional code enforcement. We have.
Two decades ago, people got nervous of the traffic. Mr. Robinson, you're out of order, please.
They're, they're both talking back and forth.
No, I'm not talking back and forth, I've stopped.
It's a shot.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice President. I want to ask you for a reason, but it was actually me, and I don't have, I don't have a reason.
No, what you want to do is you want to be angry and yell at people, Scott, so keep it to yourself, please. I've had enough of that from you, in email form and in spoken word, thank you.
Point of order was, I, I don't, your discussion is your discussion, is that, as I recall, there's a motion and a second, and this has nothing to do with that motion and the second, I just want to, that's, so that's all I was going to say, you should vote on, I think, motion, or if you're commenting on the motion, that's permitted, of course, but this has nothing to do with the motion that Ellen made, and was seconded by Scott.
Mr. Vice President, this is Justin, I have a couple of questions for the borough manager.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mitchell, I know, you know, whichever way we vote on this, it won't matter to you, you will do as voted on. Having dealt with this since the beginning of the pandemic, and also since 2018, when we put it in place, would you say there is a lot more hardship now?
Sure.
But you're also working with those people and extending deadlines where necessary.
Absolutely.
But they're also aware that they are going to have to replace their sidewalk eventually.
Correct.
If we were to suspend a program, it's more than we just create a backlog for the inspectors to have to pick up again when they start, right?
It's up to council. Although, I'd like clarification on the motion as to, is the motion addressing curb and sidewalk work independently, or is it also applying to use and occupancy inspections?
I'm not sure what you mean by that, like, use and occupancy is different than.
Yeah, if, if there's a curb and sidewalk issue as part of a use and occupancy inspection, and that has to be addressed prior to the UNO permit being issued, are you asking for that to be paused?
No, this is them walking the streets, putting X's on sidewalks, not when someone is trying to sell their home and getting an inspection.
I just wanted to make sure I understood, yeah.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, I walk probably anywhere from a mile and a half to two miles every night of the week, and in two years of doing the sidewalk program, we haven't put a dent in it. So I don't know if we're not moving fast enough, or we're not citing enough, and it's not going to be, it's going to be an unpopular opinion that people have to spend money and replace sidewalks. But I can tell you, especially the routes to and from the school, that our kids travel the most, sometimes have the most, or the worst sidewalks. And I think suspending this while the borough manager is also working to make sure that people can afford it in the long run, I think would be a mistake.
And in my experience, most of the, the one-sided don't need to be replaced, they need to be fixed, so it's not even a full replacement situation.
Yeah, and a lot of cases, if I could just chime in, if repair is a reasonable option, that's certainly exercised, and I'd have to check my facts on this, but I don't think in the entirety of the program since its inception, has anyone actually been cited.
Nope.
So.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, Ms. Sherlock.
I have a question, actually, it would be for Mr. Mitchell, but also for Keystone. How are we, how are we handling or addressing the sidewalks that are so, they're not even necessarily deteriorated, but they're uprising from trees? And, you know, most of them, or a lot of them, I should say, are on Pennsylvania Avenue, a lot of them are on, some on Osborne. So, I mean, we have to be fair in how we assess, I get that, but those trees are trees that, in the, I mean, the borough planted the tree so many years ago, and people don't have $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 to take it down a tree in order to put their sidewalk in order. So have we addressed that, or what's going on with that?
Well, there's a couple ways, some, to deal with root intrusion, sometimes if the sidewalk's taken up, you can just cut the roots away from it, but you're kind of prolonging, they're eventually going to come back and not peave the sidewalk again. I might get held for this, but it probably wasn't sound public policy to plant a tree that gets this big around in its trunk, in a space that's this big. But, you know, we have to deal with what is and move on.
Scott, is there a way we can relax the rules with being ownership of the trees? Because I've had a couple residents say to me that they would, they would get rid of the tree, but they're, they don't want to touch it because it's their property, and they don't want to have to do something with the tree, and have the borough come back and say, you took our tree down, you're in trouble, whatever, if someone could take ownership of a tree if they want to, because if, I don't have this problem in front of my house, but if I did, and I had to replace a sidewalk because of a tree, I would probably cut that tree down before I put a new sidewalk, because like you said before, you just.
Yeah, so, so would I, I mean, it's private property, the property owner owns the property, and that includes technically the tree, it is on their property. Now granted, it's in a right-of-way, but if the tree, the tree is dead, dying, diseased, poses any threat to public safety or their property, they have every right to remove it. They don't have to wait for the borough that has a list 10 years long in mitigating tree issues. I understand quite often they want to because of the expense involved, but, yeah, that's.
So a homeowner could remove a tree, and there could be no repercussions.
Yes. We would certainly prefer they check with us first, if it's a shade tree, meaning a street tree, and in the right-of-way, but like I said, if it's dead, dying, diseased, poses a threat to public safety in any way, has falling limbs, has storm damage, all the above, they have every right to remove that tree.
If they have the wherewithal.
Correct.
Otherwise, they'll come to the borough for it.
I had a resident, resident on the second ward, has had an issue with a tree for quite some time, and he wanted to remove the tree, but he was a little apprehensive about it, because he didn't want someone from the borough coming, and now if you go to store, and say, you tore our tree down, and he didn't, he didn't, he didn't want to touch it, but if he can remove this tree and not have any repercussions, now, he may not remove it, he may not feel like paying for it, he might just let it sit there and wait for the borough to come and take care of it, and he get a rare out to it. I'm sure there are people out there that kind of address such problems with the property, with a burrowed tree, and.
Yeah, a couple, a couple times.
And another thing, too, is.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, the, whatever the, whatever the laws, not the law state, whatever defines a shade tree and whatnot, like if someone has a tree that in their opinion is going to mess up their sidewalk, or in their opinion is a public safety hazard, and they have 30 people come protesting for their house with, you know, tree people, that don't want that tree to come down, and we run into that problem.
Well, we're not anti-tree, but we also can't have the expectation that people should allow a tree to, for the root intrusion to damage their curbs, their sidewalk, their driveway open, their driveways cause a trip hazard on their property. I mean, the borough is a walking town, the public, the, the school kids walk to and from school. A couple of times a year, we do get inquiries from people, am I allowed to shave, to trim this tree, or am I allowed to remove this tree? And any of that have come to me, I have said, absolutely, you have every right to do it.
Point of order, we're off on a heck of a tangent.
Oh, so, oh, hold on, I think the mayor beat you. Go ahead, mayor.
Yeah, I was trying, thank you, yeah, I just wanted to say, since I sat up on it many years on council, the shade trees, the street trees, they've been discussed many times over the years, and it seems like the policy really hasn't changed, from what I'm hearing tonight, that the, the trees in that little green belt right-of-way, technically I was always told belonged to the borough, but the borough has never denied a resident the request when the resident wants to remove the tree. When it's a dead tree, a safety issue, the borough will step up and do more. If it's a live tree, the resident has always been granted permission to remove that tree, and that's been for at least 10 years that I can tell you personally. I hope that helps.
Thanks, mayor.
We still have a motion on the floor, though, correct?
Yes.
We do, but I think, didn't one of you have your hand up when the mayor spoke?
No, I'm trying to say we're off on a tangent.
Oh, oh, okay.
Any more comments? Ready to vote? Okay, can we hear the motion one more time before we vote on it?
Very good.
Does anyone, can someone read it back to me?
Do you want to read the motion, or?
Did you write it down, or?
I did.
Go ahead.
It's a motion to pause the curb and sidewalk compliance until December due to COVID-19, is what I have.
But not to apply to.
Does not apply to UNO permits.
Okay.
I can add that if you would like.
Yeah, because that's what, that's what. So since it's been slightly changed, we should have a new, Ellen, that's your motion, right?
Correct.
So, let me, a second, someone should second that exact motion.
Scott, you should second.
Yeah, I'll second, second.
You vote now?
Roll call? Roll call or by acclamation? You want to do roll call? Mr. Bowers?
Mr. Paul, I'm sorry, one question, I apologize, I should have asked this sooner. So is this, how about the people that are in the process? We're moving forward with that, or we're not? Like, like, say someone's in the middle of it with you, but they haven't started the actual project.
Freeze on it.
Do they have to comply, or not?
You have to attention.
I mean, how, what's really the dead, what's really the dead stop? I'm sorry.
I'm not going to keep talking if you do, okay? I'll give up.
All right, I have a question. What is really the dead stop? Is it somebody that's already, has said, yes, they'll do it, but hasn't started? Are they permitted to, to, to stop? I just want verification.
It seems to me the way the mode, the, the, the intent of the motion, correct me if I'm wrong, is to give everybody a holiday till the end of the year because of COVID. So that means everyone is given quip and see, at least, you hold the timetable, no? Isn't that, isn't that, doesn't apply to everybody at this point? I don't know how else to interpret it.
That's my impression.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ready for roll call?
Okay, Mr. Bowers? No. Mrs. Dreisbach? Ms. Halaho?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
No.
No.
I'm sorry, what's the total, Mr. Mitchell?
It looks like it is four to three.
So carries. Okay, thank you. Boroughs, any other new business? Okay, borough officials. Are there any borough officials here that haven't spoken?
I have, a couple residents called me about the, the mayor touched, broached on his report about the fireworks. I don't know what the answer is. The enforcement, George would know that if there's 500 people laying on fireworks, two officers working, there's no way that you can catch everybody that's laid up. I don't know if there's anything we can do. We don't have the space in the borough to do, but what he said, the one town that where they had a fire, watched and supervised them when they were laying them off. But if anyone has any ideas, what we can do to control the fireworks, other than telling your neighbor if they're laying them off, please stop, or, other than policing ourselves, I don't know what we can do. But I just want to put that out there, that a lot of people are complaining about the fireworks.
Scott, I would recommend Googling Pennsylvania fireworks laws. There is some movement in Harrisburg to basically go back to what we had before, which seemed to curtail.
This is actually for Mr. Mitchell.
Mrs. Sherlock, hold on. Hold on, someone's speaking.
Sorry, I didn't hear anybody. I'm sorry.
Which, you know, two years ago, although people complained about fireworks, it seems like it's 10 times worse two years later. So maybe if they rolled back, you know, what's allowed to be purchased and shot off here, that may help. But Google it, because I think there are some legislators.
The money that Harrisburg is getting taxed, that's the problem.
Yeah, but they're getting a whole lot of complaints, too.
Mrs. Sherlock, I think it's safe if you want to.
Okay, go ahead.
I was wondering, will we be discussing that police study present, or have a presentation regarding that police study? And is that, is there any, any plan for that? Or is that just something for our information, or?
Well, the consultant who did it and the DCED representative that was involved with it are still intending to come out once they're allowed to, to do face-to-face presentation. However, I don't think that prevents council from reviewing it in the meantime. I think you all have copies, and I think it's on the box, so.
I'd also just like to say thank you to our police chief and the other officers, and the officers from the surrounding towns for their presence on July 11th. I know that the mayor mentioned this earlier, for the peaceful rally. But I'd also like to say thank you to the participants who were respectful and peaceful. And I think that it's a high mark for Morrisville, and it meant well. And he also mentioned Officer Jason Saucier. Wish him luck in his future. It sounds like he's stepping up. And one of the best things is the Delaware River was named River of the Year from the American Rivers Association. They were quoted as saying that this is a national success story, because the Delaware River, of course, was so polluted many years ago. But a large part of that success is Maya Van Rosen, who is our riverkeeper. And she has been extremely passionate and has been part of that for 27 years. And just as a reminder, that the river actually provides drinking water to 15 million people in the vicinity. So I've always been, you know, there's many reasons to like the river, but drinking water is one of them for sure. So, and last, the Elks Club is having a flea market on August 15th. So if anybody wants to buy a table or drop off donations, please contact them. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Paul. So I'll bring this back up when Mr. Parker's back, because it should be the entire council, but I was planning on bringing this up tonight anyway. And I touched base on it a little earlier. Short of getting an email recently on some potential changes of positions within the borough, and some rumors of a council person wanting to be borough manager, I don't know what the goals of this council is. I don't know what our direction is at all. Maybe it's just a communication thing amongst council, but I just, I'm at a loss for what our direction is. Are we just looking to maintain and keep things the way that they are? Or are we looking to grow and change? I do like that we're voting in favor of moving forward with the park. That's real important to me. It's something that I really want to see get done, and we're paving roads and doing some good things there. But I'm just not clear on what the, what our goals and our direction is for this council. So I'll bring this up again next month, because it's something that the council president should certainly have a say in and be leading the charge on. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out now, so we could all kind of be thinking about, hey, what are we actually doing here? What are we trying to do? Are we just here to snipe and have arguments? Or are we actually looking to do something good for the town? And that's really, that's really where I'm at with stuff right now. Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to say, from what I could hear, Mr. Yeager, I couldn't hear everything you said, but I agree with most of it. And frankly, you know, I think that it'd be great if the council, if we could carve out some time. And I know that there are procedural issues, and we can't get together without being in a public meeting on that. But it would be great if we could figure out some forum, that we could have an offline discussion. And I use offline advisedly. I understand the solicitor, we're totally we can and can't do. But I think it would be very helpful for this group to have some sort of a policy conversation at some.
I agree.
I don't know how we organize it. I don't know, you know, how we conduct it, or, you know, whether it's possible. But if it is, I got to tell you, I am 100% in favor of
I agree with you, and it's something we could definitely talk about. Maybe we can do an ad hoc special meeting like we had in the past to be able to just have that frank conversation without voting on things.
Right.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't hear all of what Mike said either, but did he say something about a borough manager and someone wanting to be the borough manager?
Yes.
The council person wanting to be a borough manager?
That's my understanding, yes.
Oh, I, that's.
But we don't, yeah, it can't be. We know, it can't be. It was just a conversation that came across.
Roaming around. Okay. I thought I misunderstood what you said.
I haven't heard that either myself, but, you know, putting those examples aside, I think, I think it's definitely would be beneficial to the borough and to all of us individually, personally, I think if we could get an idea, what are we working for?
I agree.
What do we believe in? What, where do we agree? Where do we disagree? We're not even clear on that, I don't think, among ourselves. And we should be. You know, and granted, we're not as, we didn't have as much opportunity to work together or to coalesce within the first six months thanks to the COVID pandemic and all that. But even without that, there's a lot of dissension, division, all that. And I'd like to get, I'd like to build a bridge across that. I think some of you know me, know that I truly believe that. And I would love to be able to have a conversation about bigger issues and where we're headed than just to get mired in the specifics and just these roll call votes. I think, I think it would be very beneficial for all of us and for the town. And all we can, let's just think among ourselves and talk among ourselves with advice from the borough solicitor and the borough manager on how we can accomplish that. And obviously, Ted's going to be a big player in that. And I'm not speaking on behalf of him, but I can't imagine that he wouldn't support or that kind of an approach either.
Mr. Paul, could I add something?
Please do.
Under borough officials, as council is aware, we received the sanitation bids recently. There was an item in your Friday delivery regarding that, and there's going to be further analysis in this Friday's delivery. At some point, we're going to have to discuss how council would like to proceed in light of the fact that we only had one bidder who bid on all options. We only had two bids total. So some decisions are going to have to be made as to council's intentions.
Will that be on the agenda next month, if you mean?
Oh, absolutely. Council will have to make a decision in August as to whether you wish to proceed with the primary bidder, or if you wish for us to rebid.
And Mr. Mitchell, those bids were based on the new criteria that was laid out, correct?
Yes.
So it's not, we wouldn't be voting on the same company with the same rules. It would be, if anything, the same company with different rules. Not that those rules will affect change. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Yes. Crystal clear to the bidder, the primary bidder, that the rules outlined in the bid specifications will become contractual obligations at the end of the day in the contract.
Great, thank you.
So I highly suggest it to them that they take pause before submitting a bid. And we actually have a meeting coming up with them soon to reiterate our dissatisfaction to date, so.
Will I come to that meeting?
Sure.
That sheet, if I recall, no matter which option we chose, we still got the same result, correct?
Correct.
I mean, what's likelihood that we would get additional bidders if we rebid it?
Well, we had five companies inquire or call or download the bid package, but we only received two bids. So I don't know that rebidding would give us a different result. But it's an option if council wanted to explore it.
To rebid, though, how would that work? You'd have to change certain things in there, right?
Yeah, we would have to rejigger the dates and timeframe and the bid specifications, but we could simply reject the bids, reissue the bid specifications, and see what comes in, and see if, you know, if there's a dark horse emerges.
So we don't need to substantially change the bid package?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
I agree with the performance and being held accountable for, you know, some of the things they do. But I have to tell you, I've had numerous residents who like our trash hauler. And one thing I'd just like to mention, I think we expect, or the residents expect our trash haulers to be mind readers when it comes to what's trash, what's recycling. I've seen people put things out in the most absurd way. And I think if our, I think we wouldn't have any trouble if our residents were a little more respectful of how they put their garbage out, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Of course, we can't, we can't monitor that. So I, you know, but if there's not going to be a lot of change with a new bid, I'm not sure that we should go through that expense.
Well, there is a lot of change if you look at the price.
Yes. Well, there is, yeah, there's a big difference.
Yeah, because remember, this hasn't been bid in five years, so it's, I'm sorry, let's pause for one second. Chief, did you have a question?
Do you want to discuss the, how I'm going to do in these directives?
Oh, yeah, I thought you were going to do it in your report. Do you want to do it now, or? Okay, well, why don't you, Mr. Paul, the chief wanted to talk to council about how a process you want us to follow for reviewing directives and policies in the police department going forward, because he wants to have a couple others updated. Is that fair?
Pretty much. We have approximately 80 police directives, okay, which you received two of them three or four weeks ago. And I don't know where they are, but they're pretty, two pretty important ones. I've received no questions, and they're sitting with lawyers, far as I know. Is this going to be a two-month process every time I give two directives? Because we, that was one thing that was talked about, that council never saw these directives, but they did years ago when they concurred with them. But I will give you the most important ones first. But if we're going to do all 80 of them, council's going to look at them. We need to have a better pace than two every two months or however. I can't believe we don't have these back from the lawyers already. There are two very well-written directives, and they're very, very important directives. I don't know, do you want me to give you two every month? Do you not? I don't know how, what direction you want me to go in.
Just so you're aware, chief, the solicitor's office is working on the two that you already submitted. And just recently, maybe a month ago, when you provided us with the electronic copies of all the directives, we've put them on the box. So all of those directives are available for review by council anytime they choose. Or if they want to task a committee with this purpose, they can do that, too.
So I don't know, I mean, there's some very important ones on there. As you see, I gave you the two most important ones with additions. There's the pursuit directive. There's a lot of directives that need to be.
Were these the ones that had Morrisville Township on them, and Lower Banfield, and Bristol, and Philadelphia?
No, you just got two, you just had two of them just sent to you. Okay, they're the ones I was wanting to get approved. But if you, I.
I think Mr. Robinson is referring to the police management study that did cite that some of them were like boilerplate that may have been.
Correct.
It wasn't the study.
Borrowed from other places and need to be updated.
It was separate.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
But you did receive the last two I sent to you, correct?
I believe so.
Okay. I just need a little direction on how you guys want me to do this.
I would think that those two will probably be teed up and ready for the August agenda.
Okay.
Can we get two more before then, too?
Well, but if you're wanting to do others, you know, council might want to come up with a process on how you want these to be handled. Is there, are you going to want a committee to review these before it comes to the full council, as has been done in the past? Do you just want it to come to the full council? I mean, what's your, what's your pleasure?
My concern is that it's been with the lawyers for three weeks now. And I don't know how much these directors are going to cost us. I don't know what they're doing with them.
I can't hear.
So that's my concern. Are they rewriting them? Or are they just reading them?
The entire night, so someone's going to have to tell me later.
I haven't, you know.
The chief was asking about the status of the two policy directives that were distributed three weeks ago.
Can I address that, Mr. Paul?
Please, Mr. Flagger.
Yeah, we looked at that. We may have a number of changes. We sent it over to Labor Council, too, because they dealt with deadly force, use of deadly force. The chief was correct in singling those out first, because those are the ones that people are in the streets about now. They're the most controversial and the most impactful. On the, the Labor Council's looking at to come back with some changes. And then it's going to present it to council for your final, for your approval. That was the plan. Most councils, you know, wants to handle it differently. But we looked at it. We had a couple minor tweaks, a few things. And then we sent over to Labor Council. They have some issues, too, to make sure, to make sure that we're at the cutting edge of police, all that stuff, and to make sure that we stay out of, we stay out of trouble and that our policies are current and very, very modern. And the police can live with as well. So we expect to get that back from them shortly. And council, council will have the ultimate final decision as to what their pleasures are those.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to have both you and Labor Council review it first, and then we review it after that, and give our comments and questions based on what's already been gone through the legal experts.
Yeah, I mean, there's some serious, you know, this is, this is the serious stuff.
Sure.
Policing, stuff that probably keeps the chief up at night and what have you. So we just, we didn't receive it that long ago. We immediately looked at it, immediately made our comments, and immediately sent it over to Labor Council. So there has been no delay of any kind. And we expect that next month, it will be here in time for you to review and decide how you want to handle it.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Sherlock.
Were they, were they number 202 and 203? Does anybody, do you remember, Mr. Flagger? Or does the chief know?
They may have, they.
There were two that were separate from the rest. I'm guessing it was.
Right, right. Those were the two that the chief was the most concerned with.
Okay.
Yes.
And the rest?
Whether they're 202 or 203. It sounds familiar. I don't want to say yes. I think you may be right. I think you may be right. But yes, the one, and I told you what it dealt with, so yes.
The dangerous stuff.
Yeah, the stuff that the chief worries about.
The other directors that you were talking about, Mr. Mitchell, they were sent out on June 24th. And there's a whole string of them.
Yep, they're all on there. They're all on the box available to you, right?
I haven't gone through them. There's.
But those aren't the ones, just, those aren't the ones we're reviewing. We're reviewing specifically the ones.
We're reviewing specifically the ones that are the most potentially problematic for what Morrisville were.
Yeah, I'm assuming the chief is probably wanting to present these to you in like priority order, you know, the most important ones first, then we'll work our way down a list.
Very much appreciated the way the chief did it, because those were clearly the hot button issues and it was great that the chief did that. And we, the chief was finally able to get us, you know, the computers so that we could play around with it without having to retype the whole thing or scan it in. So we thank the chief for that.
But we should also probably make a decision at some point, and perhaps you want to wait until Mr. Parker is back, to decide what process you want him to follow going forward. Do you want a committee to, of council to review these things and then the final comes to the full council? Or do you just want everything to come to the full council when it's ready for review?
I think it'll be important to hear what Ted thinks. I'd be happy for it to come straight to the whole council, because I think ultimately the whole council needs to review it and take it very seriously. But if there's something to be gained by having a smaller committee work on it more intensively, then that's fine, too. So I don't know enough to be able to give an educated answer.
Okay, well, maybe we can get back to you with a defined process next month. I'm sorry, Mayor, did you have something?
Yeah, if I may, I'm, I'm not trying to be funny, but, um, the, the council members really don't have the expertise, so to give it to a smaller, uh, committee, then to give it to a bigger committee, we want to streamline this. The, the idea that's being missed here is, as was pointed out by Mr. Flager, that these are definitely important, but the chief and I really would like all of the directives to be updated. So he wants to come up with a process that we would like to give two per month. And then, you know, it's going to be time-consuming and expensive, but it's really in the best interest of our community to get every directive up to date. I mean, before Chief McClay and I were there, the directives that we had were typewritten, they were so old. So these are new ones, but yet it's time to redo them again. So that's what we want to do, streamline the process. And I'm sure you want solicitor review, but we need to get moving on it.
I have a couple of comments and questions.
Expect to be prepared next month for, for the first two that you suggest you gave us, so that's pretty, that's like, it'll be like a 30-day turnaround. Our review is done, so it's up to now the Labor Council.
So we don't need to wait until August for the chief to send over two more? We can start the next two? Is that, is there a consensus that that's, oh, okay?
I think you, you can prioritize them and just figure out what the next two might be, right? I would think.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, but this is going to get to be a very costly, um, project if we continue using two lawyers, you know, to satisfy one directive. Because you saw, you know, because Mr. Flager looks at it and then now he's, I guess, sending it on to Chris Gerber to look at it. I, you know, I don't know if we really need that many lawyers looking at a document, but that's going to be up to, you know, council as to how they want to handle that. Because there's, like I said, there's 80 directives.
Yeah, it may also depend on the directive.
Okay, I just want, I just wanted to be clearly, because I'm, I want to get these all done. I'm going to use priority, you know, pursuits, you know, things like that, that are going to be the high button issue. But as we go along, it's going to get costly. So every month I will be submitting two of them to you and I just, I would like it to really start moving forward. But there has to be some direction now. If they go to council, council has to come back to me to make sure we are ingredients on use of force, things like that. Because like I, when I spoke to your council, he says, well, George, you're the expert on this. Okay? So I'm sending it out to other people. It has to be a two-way street to be able to make sure we do have exactly what needs to be in there. So that's where we have to get to a point, too, of how it's coming back to me and then maybe coming to you as a, as a policy committee. I, I don't know how you want to do it.
Well, when we get one that's teed up and ready for council review, we'll do like we usually do, and that is share a copy of it with you and the mayor, so that anyone who has edits or revisions to suggest can, can do so.
Okay. All right. So I'll get you two more this week.
Cool.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul, I think there was someone who had a comment.
Yeah, I had a comment. Previously, the last two years, I attended P S A B, um, training and Mr. Gerber, our Labor Council, had spoke there and identified, if I'm going to go from memory, uh, there's roughly 10 to 12, I would say, higher risk throughout directives, um, that I would suggest we kind of follow his guidance on, that would go to him for review and maybe the rest of them just go through our normal solicitor.
Yeah. And I think some of that, we're going to have to take a cue from Randy, make sure he's comfortable with approving it and, and, and giving feedback on it.
Okay, are we done? I can't, I can't tell if there's any more questions or comments. Any other?
I have a request, Mr. Paul. It's actually of, of Mr. Mitchell. Is it possible that when we get our, um, our packets, could they be more identifiable? In other words, if we're getting the, a June financial, then it says June financial? If we're getting agenda, can it say the agenda? Because everything just says, uh, delivery, 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 but there's never a breakdown. Like, um, just can they be more identifiable? I, I don't, maybe I'm the only one that struggles with that, but.
I've talked about that.
I'll, I'll chime in on this with you, Mrs. Sherlock, since we talked about this, I've talked about with others. You know, for, especially for somebody new like me, who doesn't know what the hell I'm doing, I get a stack of, of 80 to 100 pages in some of the, in the borough box and you got, you go through the whole thing and you don't, it's hard to, you got to figure out for yourself what's important, what's not important. I understand that's part of the job, but it would, it would certainly help me and maybe any other, um, novices, that if you could kind of steer us into, into what, you know, where each item is in the box or at least kind of like orders of priority or orders of magnitude or kind of how we can meaningfully attack those 80 pages, other than just going through them one by one, which is what we've all been doing up till now. Maybe there's no answer to that, but I, for one, I'm willing to acknowledge my ignorance that I'm just, I'm just kind of like, I go in there blind and just dig way through and eventually you, you figure it out. But, um, it, it would be helpful if there's some way to, that, that, that things could be either labeled or identified or, or categorized in some sort of way that we can go through those, those mounds of documents more efficiently. Is that what you're trying to say, Mrs. Sherlock?
Uh, I am. Like, like a financial would be, you know, by itself, uh, a, a monthly financial by itself, the bill list, it could be bill list, June bill list, uh, 2020 or, you know, and maybe an agenda would be, even if it said agenda for, and it might require three deliveries in one delivery, but it would.
And I guess it's less of an issue when we just have one, when we have one delivery per month, that is, here's the big delivery the week before the meeting and there it all is. But sometimes, especially like, like, like this past week, we've had three days in a row, it's like, okay, I got to go through, and, and it's a minor inconvenience, but it's also just, it, it makes it harder to digest. And it's just anything that, that could make it easier for those of us who aren't as, as well-versed in this thing, it would, it would be a help. That's all I can say.
Let me see what we can do.
You know, Scott, if you look at, um, like a couple of years ago.
Do you want a motion to adjourn?
Look at the files, it was much easier than now.
Second.
Remind everybody that we have the executive session right after this. And, and Scott, what do we have to do for, do we have to hang up and zoom back in?
No, no, for, for the executive session, uh, Mr. Vice President, if you don't mind, if we could take a five-minute break, uh, we're not going to go in the back room, because it's about 1,000 degrees back there and we'd be too tight and we want a social distance. So I'm just going to let the room clear, uh, and then we will continue on, uh, as normal an executive session. However, John, uh, the meeting's adjourned, so we can terminate broadcast. And Terry, we can stop recording and we can terminate broadcasting.
And so then are we going to, do we zoom back in?
No, no, you can, you can stay right where you are, but we're going to take a five-minute break and then we're going to do the executive session.
Great, thank you. Uh, have, have we officially adjourned yet? Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Okay, see you in five. Thank you all.
Yes, it, don't anybody hang up or, or anything.